यदि मैं जीने से अंदर हूँ यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह तुझ पर तो ले लो मेरे बाग उत्तर और रास्ता तुझ के सोचो जिन्हें धन्यवाद दुश्मनों को मुझ पर चलाऊँ यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह तुझ पर और मेरे दौड़े के साथ तुझ पर खड़े हो मेरे स्तोनी गिल्स में जाऊँगा तो मेरे बाग को ले लो यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह तुझ पर गोरी फोन जैविक भूमि दुनिया में दिखाई सुनने वाले दिनों और सिर ऊपर फैलूँगा तभी सभी मेरी सोने भी यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह देव तुझ पर आऊँगा यह तुझ पर
We will sing one Nepali song Pranak Pratik please come
187 हम इतुलोसियन भट्ट 187 नंबर गाने प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो जहाँ छप रे छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता जहाँ छप रे छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता बेटी तदिन का पापन एक घुला दी स्वीकार गारो बेटी तदिन का पापन एक घुला दी स्वीकार गारो छमा सिल प्रभु प्रति ज्ञानो सा छमा सिल प्रभु प्रति ज्ञानो सा छमा गणे चंस बहिमा प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ
Telugu 397 जहाँ छप रे Prabhu tattu konnulithu छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता जहाँ छप रे छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता अभिष्य के हो काके होन चौ पीर मन मानालियो अभिष्य के हो काके होन चौ पीर मन मानालियो बरिक्षा दुख भारु ठाउने बरिक्षा दुख भारु ठाउने इश्व मसीह चंस हारा प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो जहाँ छपे माँ शांति आनंद अरिपोढ़ बहिमा निर्णय जहाँ छपे शांति आनंद अरिपोढ़ बहिमा निर्णय चरैतिरांध कार्ल छायो दुख लड़ाई अनेक चरैतिरांध कार्ल छायो दुख लड़ाई अनेक भय भितुन छौ कसरी बाजौ भय भितुन छौ कसरी बाजौ इश्व मसीह चंस हारा प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो जहाँ छन प्रेम छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता जहाँ छन प्रेम छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता भरोसा जगमा गई पानी छैन व्यर्थ सारा व्यर्थ भरोसा जगमा गई पानी छैन व्यर्थ सारा व्यर्थ प्रभु को चारण सांचो सारण प्रभु को चारण सांचो सारण जहाँ सुरा चित्रा छान प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो प्रभु तिराखाओ चालो इश्वतिराखाओ चालो जहाँ छन प्रेम छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता जहाँ छन प्रेम छप मान आशा हरू को परिपूर्णता We will sing one more song
हम इतुलोसियन के 109 नंबर इतुलोसियन भट्ट 109 नंबर बजन गाने G major छान गहिराई मा इश्व तीम्रो प्रेम मा गहिरी ना छान छू माता देव तीम्रो प्रेम को स्कूल मा उन्नाटि गारो प्रभु झन गहिराई देव जानो छप पारी देव प्रभु मगहिरी छू विनय स्वीकार गारी देव छान गहिराई मा आत्मा ले भरेरा प्रभु रूपना देव ताकि मेरो जीवन प्रभु कृष्ण मा लिप्त बहिजाओ प्रभु झन गहिराई देव जानो छप पारी देव प्रभु मगहिरी छू विनय स्वीकार गारी देव छान गहिराई मा कृष्ण लाई चिन्ह छू मा दुख ले खेरीदा उनको प्यार मा प्रतिदिन स्रोतीर भए उन्हें फल गिवला प्रभु झन गहिराई देव जानो छप पारी देव प्रभु मगहिरी छू विनय स्वीकार गारी देव कृष्ण को प्रेम मा छप गहिरी छू उनको इच्छा ली कृष्ण को रूप मा मेरो पूर्ण जीवन परिना तुन छा प्रभु झन गहिराई देव जानो छप पारी देव प्रभु मगहिरी छू विनय स्वीकार गारी देव
Finally we will sing one Telugu song Before we hear the message, song number 327 Modunleero yedu Sam Brother Uday please come 327 Old song book 324 राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु कुछ तकिच्छा 327, new song book 324, old song book We will all sing together And the class part kottam modunleero yedu राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु ऐत्ता बढ़ेदा वा लेक विडुवा बढ़ेदा वा ऐत्ता बढ़ेदा वा लेक विडुवा बढ़ेदा वा राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु तेलसिकों तिवानी वेंत कोर पापिवो सिलुवा भए तीच्छे गानी पापरुणामुन तेलसिकों तिवानी वेंत कोर पापिवो सिलुवा भए तीच्छे गानी पापरुणामुन ओप्पुको निन पापमुन जमिंचुन एसु लेनी एडला विडुवा बढ़ेदा वो सिद्ध पड़ुमा ओप्पुको निन पापमुन जमिंचुन एसु लेनी एडला विडुवा बढ़ेदा वो सिद्ध पड़ुमा राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु ओत्तिलेनी कन्या लवले बोसपोतिवा चयलेवु प्रभु सेवनी शक्तितो ओत्तिलेनी कन्या लवले बोसपोतिवा चयलेवु प्रभु सेवनी शक्तितो नूने लेक ब्रह्मतो प्रति केदवा लेनी एडला विडुवा बढ़ेदा वो सिद्ध पड़ुमा नूने लेक ब्रह्मतो प्रति केदवा लेनी एडला विडुवा बढ़ेदा वो सिद्ध पड़ुमा राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु वाक्य मुकई जीवितम अप्पगिंपका दाचिति वार्तालांतुल अनुलेख जयका वाक्य मुकई जीवितम अप्पगिंपका दाचिति वार्तालांतुल अनुलेख जयका मोदक्ति प्रेम अनु तिलिगि पोंदुमा लेनी एडला नस्ता पोलुवो सिद्ध पड़ुमा मोदक्ति प्रेम अनु तिलिगि पोंदुमा लेनी एडला नस्ता पोलुवो सिद्ध पड़ुमा राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु नानम इच्छि विमोचिंचि नी प्रेमतो रूपनु बट्टि नड़िपिति वी नादु यात्रलो नानम इच्छि विमोचिंचि नी प्रेमतो रूपनु बट्टि नड़िपिति वी नादु यात्रलो मुगिवर को सिद्ध पर्चु नी राख गई हल्लेलुया 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 मुगिवर को सिद्ध पर्चु नी राख गई हल्लेलुया 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 राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु ऐत्ता बढ़ेदा वा लेक विडुवा बढ़ेदा वा ऐत्ता बढ़ेदा वा लेक विडुवा बढ़ेदा वा राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु राजुलकुरा जयन एसु प्रभु रानयुन्नाडु Ready to sing Bible chorus, stand up and sing At the time please come forward Leave empty place at the back So we request brothers and sisters to come forward Don't stand where you are Where you are standing Please come forward In obedience leave your Leave your place and come little forward Some people they will be hard-hearted Even if we announce also, they will stand just like that, there only Please come forward, try to come forward please Leave empty place at the back If anybody comes, let them sit there The best book to read is the Bible The best book to read is the Bible If you read it every day It will help you all the way Oh, the best book to read is the Bible दुनिया में सबसे प्यारे पुस्तक बाइबल दुनिया में सबसे प्यारे पुस्तक बाइबल पढ़े जूस को रोज़ पर रोज़ सांठे कद्दे कोई ना हो ओ दुनिया में सबसे प्यारे पुस्तक बाइबल संसार में सर्वस्वेश्चित पुस्तक बाइबल सर्वस्वेश्चित पुस्तक बाइबल ओ संसार में सर्वस्वेश्चित पुस्तक बाइबल पटिप्पस्वेश्चित गंधाम बाइबल पटिप्पस्वेश्चित गंधाम बाइबल अर्धदिनम पटिंचिना प्रेमतोड़ नड़पुर ओ पटिप्पस्वेश्चित गंधाम बाइबल Kindly be seated Kindly note tomorrow announcements God willing and tomorrow morning 7 o'clock There will be worship in Elshidai Mandali So then afterwards 10 o'clock English service will be here, English Telugu Then after that love feast will be there Then there won't be any meeting here evening service also So but evening we will have a special meeting at Vijaya Nagar Karmae House of Worship That will be the last special meeting with our dear brother Daniel Katri So now brother will bring God's word to us
So good evening and greetings to you all In the highly exalted name of the Lord Jesus Christ This is my great privilege to be with you I was here to attend the God servants and responsible brothers meeting in Karakudi But God has given me another opportunity to date the meeting with you We have been hearing from for many years about you Also brother Satyraj has given me opportunity to speak through online during the Covid pandemic
Covid महामरी समय में साहोदर सत्यराज ऑनलाइन वाक्य परिचय चेस्ट करके आओगा समिचार
So tonight we are studying from the Book of Acts So let us turn to the Book of Acts So I asked brother do you have any particular theme for the meeting But he said as the Lord, as the Holy Spirit leads, so please speak So after much prayers and also while returning from Karakudi We had a conversation during the travel in the terrain So I late by the Holy Spirit, I must speak through this Acts chapter 2 verse 42 So last night also we studied about Acts 2:42 Amongst some believers, those who were attended here tonight also So the God's word is never become old It's a new, every day new, new day by day The same message we heard from the different messengers But God has revealed his will, his purpose And his revelation through different ways
इधिए वाक्य परिचय वचन वर्तमान अनेक मिनट वर्तमान के लिए विन्ड वचन
Let's read altogether chapter 2 verse 42 Let's ask help from the Lord हमरा प्रेमी, विश्वास सुख्या करुणा मैं परमिशर Our wonder-working God, God Abraham, Isaac and Never Isaac and Jacob Never failing and never pursuing But covenant-keeping and covenant-fulfilling God Who gives us the promises Day by day, month by month Year after year and fulfill it According thy will as we claim day by day So Father, same God Who is enthroned in heaven And who is also in the midst of the congregation here According Matthew chapter 18 verse 20 So we bow before you and we worship you We adore you, we love you, Lord Thank you, Lord, for assembling us together in this manner So Father, I'm standing This honor the fellow, I come I confess all my sins and iniquities and failures Confess all my sins Once again, I claim that the blood of the Lamb The new covenant come under the sprinkling of the blood Truly in the conscience, body truly in the conscience, body, soul and mind. So Father, speak through me, thy children here according their need to edify the body of Christ. So Father, this evening we may fail to open heaven, open heaven in this, uh, in this hour. Also I pray for the dear brothers, those who are translating give them also the fresh anoint from above and give us a one tune, same tune, one spirit. So Lord and accomplish thy purpose in our midst to now. So binding all the power of darkness, I pray this prayer in the name of our Lord and Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen.
So last night we were looking about the fellowship.
अनि हमी गत हिजोको राति छे हमिले संगति को बिस्से मा हेरी रहेकथियो
गत रात्रि सहवासम गुरुज्ञमा माटड़तो अछै
So in Acts chapter two verse forty-two, there are four things as mentioned.
अनि यानीर प्रीरितको किताब दुया देख बयालीस पदमा चार वडा कुरारु थियाँ लेखिकु
अपोस्लकार्यम रंडो वच्छन् नल्परण्डो वच्छन्तलो नाल्गु संगतल मानव इकड़ो चुड़ा वच्छु
Apple's doctrine
प्रीरितरुको शिक्षा, अपोस्लकार्यमलो बोध
Fellowship
संगति
सहवासम
Breaking of bread
रोटी भचाई
रोट्टा विरछुटा
And prayers
अनि प्रात्न
प्रार्धन चैटा
So you can notice that we have only one doctrine which is apostolic doctrine.
अनि यात पहले याद गनोस यानीर एवटा मात्र शिक्षा स तिचे प्रीरितरुको शिक्षा
इकड़ो मानव गमनिस्ते ओके बोध मानव कालिंचन्डी मधा अपोस्लकार्यमलो बोध
And there is only one fellowship.
अनि त्यानीर एवडाई मात्र संगति स
तर तो ओकेटी सहवासम कालिंचन्डी
And only one bread.
अनि त्यानीर एवडाई रोटी स
ओके रोट्टा कालिंचन्डी
But prayers, many prayers.
तर त्यानीर धेरै प्रात्न रुसन
आइथे अनेक मिनट प्रार्धनलो
So tonight we will turn to the Book of Second King.
अनि हमी दोस्रो राजक किताब
रात्रि वेललो रंडो राजल वाइपकम मानव चुस्ताम
We will read the Second King chapter four verse nine.
अनि दोस्रो राजक किताब चार देखो नावप
रंडो राजल ग्रंधम नाल्गो वच्छैं तम्मीद पदि वच्छनार
नाव अनि दसपद चार देखो
We will read altogether verse nine and ten.
अनि यसलाई पनि दोस्रो राजा चार देखो नवर दसपदलाई हमी सबै मिलेर पढ्नेस
रंडो राजल ग्रंधम नाल्गो वच्छैं तम्मीद पदि वच्छन्त अंदरम कल्लस्त चादुकुंटम
And
कागा आमि तान पनि मिट्टीच चिन्न मानव यद्गोकु वच्छु एन्नो चुन्न वारु प्रतिकल्प दाईवजन्डी ने रुगुदुनो काहुन्ना मानव मात्र कोडमी दावपच्छिन्न गधि कटिंचि अंदलो अत्निकोरुको मंचको बल्ला पीटा देपस्तम्म
गासरे वडा सानो कोसिको कोठा बनाइदियो
अत्निकोरुको चुन्न पुदुको
वडा पलंग, वडा टेबल, कुर्सी, वडा सामदान राखिदियो अनि यस्तो निश्चय जबो अनि हमी काहून्छ तबो अनि एहि बस्ने गर, बस्ने गरन
So here is also we can see about the four things.
अनि यानीर पनि यो चाट्टा कुराको बिस्से लेर हमी देख्न सक्यो
इकड़ो मानव नाल्गु संगतलन चुड़ा वच्छु
It is a time of Elisa.
अनि यो चे एलिशा को समयकु कुराहो
इद्या एलिशा उन्ने वंडी समयमो
Uh there was a famine going on.
त्यानीर चे वडा खड़ेरी भाहिरको समय भैरहेकथियो
आधिनालो करु चोट चेस्कुंदी
And people had no food to eat.
अनि मानिसरकमा प्रसस्ता खाने कुराथियन
प्रजलको तिनिटकोरके आहरम लेदो
And we can see this, there is a one particular woman named, it's a Sunemi.
अनि यो वडा सुले मानि स्त्री भनिने वडा स्त्री त्यानीर हमी देख्यो
इकड़ोको स्त्रीनी सुनेमिक चेन्ना स्त्रीनी मानव इकड़ो चुड़ा वच्छु
There was a man who was going up and down on that same road of the, there was a house by.
अनि त्यानीर एवडा घर थियो अनि त्यो घरको भए, घरमा भएको थियो बाटो बड़ा चेक्जना व्यक्ति चे माथि तला गर्ने गर्द थियो
वॉरिंटिक समीपमलो वच्छु पौछु वस्ना वंडी व दाईवजन्डी निवार चुस्तु वच्छन
In the Bible, when we look particularly about, about woman, it speaks about the church.
अनि यानीर बाइबलमा चे जब पनि एवडा स्त्रीको कुरा गरिन्छ तिसले चे मंडलीलाई दर्शाउद्दस
बाइबललो मानव गवनिंच्छु चुस्नपुरो स्त्री एक संगान सुचिस्तु माट्लाडुंदी
No man noticed that the God's man was walking that, that route every day.
अनि त्यो परमिश्वरको जन्स इत्यो बाटो बड़ा सधै हिडेको छ अरु कसली वास्ता गरेकथिये न
एव्यक्ति कुर आइ दाईवजन्डीडो अकड़ा वेलुचु वस्ना रंडी संगति गवनिंच्छलेर
So but one woman, she always noticed that the man, girtly man was walking through that road.
तर त्यो स्त्रीले मात्र त्यो परमिश्वरको जन्स इत्याम बड़ी हिनेको उसले चे याद गरी रहेको रे सर
आइथे ई स्त्री योको दाईवजन्डीडो वेल्लु वस्ना रंडी संगति गवनिंचिंदी
So she compelled her husband to integrate or to build a house by the, by the same house and site, site, site by the house.
अनि त्यानीर उसले चे आफ्नो पति लाई आज त्यानीर एवडा सानो कोठा बनाइदियो वनर त्यानीर उसले बनिन
आइथे आगोडपन्ना को चिन्न गदिनी कट्टाल ने ताने को पनि मिट्टीनी आमे मानव जेस्टु वच्छिंदी
So our church must be a, must be alike that we must give, you know, the shelter some people, those who are in need.
अनि हाम्रो मंडली पनि यस्तै उनु पर्दस की खाचु परेगा मानिसले आश्रयलिन सक्नु पर्सम मंडलीमा
चुन्ने मानव संगम कुर आइ टुवंडी अक्कर कालिंचन्डी वर्कोरके ने वंडी सावर्णी, वर्की सहयम चेस्ट वंडी संगम गमा मंडली
But thank God, but her husband was without hesitation, he agreed to build the house.
तर परमिश्वर धन्यबादो स्तिस स्त्रीका पति ले पनि कुनै पनि बिरोध अथवा प्रतिवाद ना जानायकन त्यो घर बनाउनु उसले पनि निर्णय गरे
आइथे देवन स्तोत्रमो ताने को पनि मिट्टी एमात्रम कुर ताना अटगिंच्छुकुंडगा आइन आउनुन्छ चप्पड
If I was in that place, I must have been inquired with my wife, who is this man? Why you want to build a house? I should ask my wife.
यदि मो पनि इत्यो मान्छेको आज जगामा भएको भाई मले पनि मेरो पत्नीलाई सोध्ने थिये यो मान्छेको कीनसे घर बनाउन
ओके वेलन नेन आस्तानमलो पनि मिट्टी स्तानमलो उंटे ई व्यक्ति एवरू आइनक एन्दुकी विदंगुंडे मानव कट्टाल यानी प्रश्नले नडिगवानी
Thank God, but this man has a trust, had a faith in that woman, his wife, and he prepared to build the house.
तर प्रभुला धन्यबादो स्यो मान्छेको तिसको स्वास्नी अथवा पत्नी प्रति उसको विश्वास अनि भरोसा रहेछ अनि उसले इत्यो घर बनाउनु शुरु गरे
आइथे देवन स्तोत्रमो योको पनि मिट्टी ताने का भार्य पन्ना नम्मकमो आइन विश्वासमुंस्तु वच्छन
After completing the room and there were four furniture pieces we can see in that particular room.
अनि इत्यो कोठालाई बनाइसके पसी त्यानीर चार वटा सामाग्री अथवा फर्निचर अरु यानीर लेखिकु
अगधि कटिंचिन्त तर्वात नाल्गु प्रामुक्त मिनट वंडी सामाग्री नी वार अकड़ो उंच्चतम मानव चुड़ा वच्छु
And the first place is written, there is a bed.
अनि पहिलु कुराचे त्यानीर एवडा पलंग थियो
मध्यति संगति यादी मंचम
And the second was a stool.
अनि त्यानीर औरको चे वडा कुर्सी थियो
रंडो वधि बल्ला
Sorry, second was a table, back pardon.
अनि माफ कर्नुस दोस्रो चे वडा टेबल थियो
चमिचन्डी रंडो वधि बल्ला
And the third was a stool.
अनि तेस्रो चे वडा कुर्सी थियो
मुडो वधि पीटा
And fourth was a candlestick.
अनि चौथो चे वडा सामदान
नाल्गो वधि दीपस्वम्म स्तम्मम
The bed speaks about the sleeping, obviously.
अनि यानीर पलंग ले चे वडा सुतेको अवस्था वडा सुत्ने कुरालाई देखाउद्दस
सुन्ने मंचम ने दिन निद्रक वसाद्रिष्टं उंटुंदी
So we all tired after the hard work and secular jobs and then we retired in the body and then we go and red, rest on the bed.
अनि हमी संसारको काम अरु गरे पसात हाम्रो सबै काम अरु पसत हमी थाक्स्यो अनि हाम्रो पलंगमा गरे हमी त्यानीर विश्राम गर्दस
मानव प्रति दिनाएको चर्यालो कापार पनुलन्नी कुर मुगिंच्छुकुंड तर्वात एन्तो अल्सीपाय मानव मी योको मंचम पन्ना विश्रांति दिस्कुंटम
So if I was a writer, then I must write in a bed at the last.
अनि मो चे वडा यो चे लेख्ने मान्छे मो भएको भाई मले चे पलंगलाई चे अन्तमा मले लेख्ने के वाल
नेन गन्का रासे व्यक्तिन आइथे गन्का योको मंच अनि चिवरी क्रममलो रवायाली
Uh but the, the Holy Spirit of God never made mistakes, but he wrote a bed at the first.
तर पवित्र आत्मले काइले पनि गल्दी गर्नुन्न वाले पलंगलाई चे पहिलु लिख्नु, पहिलु भागमा लिख्नु भएको स
आइथे परसुद्धात्म देवड़ू ए परपाट चलेद्गा नी मंच नी मट्टमात्रिको रासी पेट्टार
The bed speaks about, obviously speaks about the rest.
अनि पलंग ले चे वडा विश्रामलाई देखाउद्दस
साधरनंगा मंचम ने दिन विश्रांति नी साद्रिष्टं उंटुंदी
The Lord Jesus Christ said
प्रभु इश्कृष्को बन्नु बयो
प्रभु नेसु कृष्ण वर चप्पार
Matthew chapter, Matthew chapter eleven twenty-eight I think, Matthew chapter eleven was
मति एगारा देखो अठाइस पदमा प्रभु लेसु बन्नुन्छ
मत्तै सुवर्त पदकुंड अछैं इर्वै एमीदा वच्छन
पर्दिनो लापसे पाउन्न निपालीमा
ए सबै परिश्रम गर्नेर भार्ले दबियकरो मोकाहाउ अनि मति मेरला विश्राम दिनेश
प्रयासपड़ी भारम मोस्कुन्छु न समस्त जनलार नायत्तकरणी नेन मीको विश्रांति कालुगु चेतुन
So Jesus Christ said, oh, come unto me, heavy laden I will give you a rest.
प्रभु इश्कृष्को बन्नु बयो ए सबै भार्ले दबियकरो मोकाहाउ मति मेरला विश्राम दिनेश
प्रभु नेसु कृष्ण वर चेतुनारो प्रयासपड़ी भारम मोस्कुन्छु न वंडी समस्त जनलार नायत्तकरणी नेन मीको विश्रांति निस्तान
We may have a secular jobs
हम्रो संसारमा आफ्नो आफ्नो काम उन्नसक्छ
इलोकुलो मानव मानव पनुल उंडवच्छु
We may have a sufficient fund, secure fund in the bank.
हम्रो बैंकमा धेरै पैशा रकम अरु उन्नसक्छ
बैंकलो कावल्सन्ने तुंदी डब्बुल मानव कालिंचन्डी वच्छु
You may have a nice luxurious car.
तबैकमे वडा दामी गाडी उन्नसक्छ
अंद विलासवंत मिनट वंडी कार कालिंचन्डी वच्छु
And you may have a good educations.
Tabaike eva ramro sikcha, sikchit mancheban tabai unusaknuuncha.
Chakshiti vidyapyasam kaliundavachu.
But, in your heart, if you have no peace, then there is a, there is a, it is like a, it is like chasing a like wind.
Tarab tabaike riddema saachu shanti shaina manesi, teesay hawa lai khedaai ko jastu matraho.
Aite nivruthiyam lo samadhan leka pothe, okagali chedinchunatugane untundini jivitam.
Because the Bible says wicked add no peace.
Tarab Bible le bandasa dusta lai shanti unudaina.
And then Bible service sundi dustuniki nemmadhi undadu ani.
If you turn to the book of Isaiah fifty seven and twenty.
Yesaya, sundhavna dhaiko, bishpad naami heri vane, esha grandam yaabeyadavacham irveyavachnum.
Yesaya, but the wicked are like a troubled sea. When it cannot rest, which waters cast up mud and dirt, there is a no peace, saith my God to the wicked.
Yesaya, saithaali sadhai ko.
Aina sundhavna.
Sundhavna ma akuno, kasali payani portinusala nepalima.
Esha yaabeyadavachemu, irveyakta vachnum telgulo, dustla ko nemmadhi undadani, naade uduselavichu chunnadu.
So people buy so many things in order to satisfy themselves.
Ani manis lechi afolai santustatu le una dhare eva kuraharu unyelikindacha.
Chundi prajalu tamal tamal santritu cheskuntukare, anekasangatal valo kontu untar.
People come to, you know, in England for the dinner and they go to sleep in United King, uh, United States of America.
Ani manis seresay, yani ra UK ma che unyeru khana khara, US ma che unyeru sutne garsha.
Kodman prajalu England kochi bojnam chesi, padukunatukare Amerika velto untar.
There is a call Sultan of Burundi. He used to have a come to shopping in, in the UK, you know, in Marks and Spencer, in the morning and then he goes back to, in his country at the night.
Ani tyanire eva Brunei ko Sultan manine ekjana Rajasan, jasay aja unishe, England ma aara shopping garsha, sar saudha kinenira, peribrunai me garavu sutne garsha.
Brunei eva Rajo, udai kalamo England lo chi, akada Vikrayalan ni chesi, shopping chesi, si raatri velita nek, deshamlali padukuntadu.
And they go to the, you know, the very expensive restaurants to, in order, in order to satisfy their hunger souls.
Ani unyeru ko teyo bhokua atmalai tripta banunla ki, dhare dhare manga restaurant harma garavu unyelai khana pina khadaasan.
Tamun tamu truktiparistukare anto karidhenetvanti eva restaurants veli bojnam chastar.
And they go the best place to see in the world also.
Ani unyeru sansarka ekdami dami dami jagaharma janikarsa.
Prapancham lo neati srestaventvanti sthalalki veli chustu untar.
So at the end, they commit suicide.
Tarav antama garavu unyelai apne atma hatya gardasan.
Aite altam lo tamun tamu suicide cheskuntar, tamun tamu champukuntar.
The best actress in the, in the Hollywood, you know, I think you heard about Marlene Monroe.
Ani tap, tapale Marlene Monroe vane ekjana, as yo film avinathika visema tapali sunnu bayega chaula.
Marlene Monroe one twenty eva, uh, nattigurinsmir vinundavachu.
And one day she happened to see her face in mirror.
Ani jab usle apno ekdino apno anvarla ti aina ma heri.
Okdinana tanam muka ani ayaka adamlo chuskundi.
There are other competent, you know, the ladies, the women's already came up, uh, as, as competed to her.
Ani tyanira dhare stree ru usla, aja usko teyo, uh, uh.
Pratisparada.
Pratisparada ma aune, dhare aru stree ru pani thiye.
Inka nek stree lu saundaringa unetvanti varu tarato potipadthanu varni chusindi.
And I think she's her, you know, she was a wrinkle, uh, she had the face was going to be, some hairs going to be gray. And that, that they see committed suicide after taking the drugs.
Ani aja usle ti kurala dehaki usko anvarcha chauri pareko, ani ab, case pani usko full daegae ko, ani ti kurala dehaker usle drugs leira, teyo dobayaru leiru le apno atma hatya garekurayani deksho.
Adamlo chushkina pudu, mokam modutal paduthu, ventrukalani telegai potenandu sangati vinappudu, taninka, uh, aika drugs thiskoni, raatri veli atma hatya cheskunsani pendi.
So dear brothers and sisters, why people they commit suicide?
Priyadaju bhai didi banyaru, kinachi manchile atma hatya garsha.
Kanka priyala sahodarila ra, sahodarila ra, yo eva prajali enduka atma cheskuntar.
Why they indulge in the drugs and they literally, they had a solo poison like and they literally die.
Ani kinachi unyeru eston, nasalu parada haruma lipta unsan, ani aja apno atmalay unyin nastagardasa.
Enduki prajalu mattupadhar talaka alavatupadi, daani eva naslotamayaka jivitan kolkutu untar.
Why they gambled, you know, without the, after, until the last penny left over in their pocket?
Ani kinachi unyeru, unyeru ko gojima, raayko antim pasha no khargunjel samunyaru juatas keladasan.
Ayaka variyaka chivari paisal koora kolpeyenta varaku koora, ahi pekatal var indukadu untar.
Why there is a division in between white finance men?
Kinachi tyanira pati ra patni visma vihazancha.
Baharya barchalik majlo enduku vijazanal unay.
Why there is a court case in between a family, you know, even the, even the family, husband and wife, and even the sons and, you know, father, within the family, they have a, even court cases.
Kinachi tyanira court case ru sa parivar bhitray pani pati patni adava chora chori bhaavamak visma, parivar ma pani court kacharika kurarusan.
Okay kutummlo baharya barchalik majlo no tarata tannri, talidanduli eva pillalik majlo, enduki court case lo untunay?
Because there is a no true peace in them. True peace, because they have a no true peace in them.
Kinavane unyeru ko riddema cheti, saachu shanti shaina.
Karname intanti varlo nizamainetvanti shanti nemadiledu.
In my life also, dear brothers, sisters, two things, two things were hounding in me.
Ani malai pani duita kurra, duita kurra lechi malai bodo satayegi.
Na jivitulodu rendusangatal no ventaruto achai.
I was afraid, I was afraid to die.
Malai se, moranadi atinae dar lakthio.
Nen moranam vishomlo anto bhaipaduthu undevani.
Another thing I have never peace in my mind.
Ani orko kurache meru riddema, kaili pani saachu shanti.
Rundaga, na ruddiyam lo ennat koora shanti nemadiledu.
I was serving in the military, in the British Army.
Masai British Army ma tyanira eva sinikru pa kam gareregi.
British siniam lo nen panisesevani.
I had enough money.
Meruva dhare pisha ru pia pani.
Na kavalsnati double naedu unnadi.
I had a family.
Meru parivar pani thiyo.
Na kutumam unnadi.
I was a very young and energetic man.
Masai ekdam hastapusta jawan manchetiye.
Ento yavastutuga balistanga unanu.
I was doing my duty carefully at all time.
Malai sabai samayne meru duty la pura ramro sangali gareregi.
Ani samyalonu na ujagan koora chakka ga nirvartistunanu.
But I have a, I never had a true peace in my heart.
Tarav meru riddema saachu shanti vane kurathiye.
Aite nizamainetvanti samadhanam na ruddiyam lo ennatu ledu.
Even I tried to commit suicide in my life.
Ani meru jyana malai atma hatya garne vani kossis gare.
Ma jivitol atma hatya cheskutu koora prayatnistu achanam.
Because I was afraid, so afraid to die, after died, what will happen? I was always is hounding in my, in my, in my mind.
Ani malai lechi aja ti malai dar lakthi ki, ma mari pachi ke unchola, bhanne kurali malai sagayne satayranthiyo.
Ne moranam vishomlo antono, bhaipaduthu undevani, it moranam tarvata yen jarutundianetvanti bhaayam lo nen pratikana.
But thank God, God has caught me in nineteen ninety four in Hong Kong while I was on Quaterga duty.
Tarav Quatergaat kotiho, Hong Kong ma ma jab duty gareregi, nineteen ninety four ma permishar le malai pakadano.
Aite devan sotramu pandunno lo tombe nalgo samostrom lo Hong Kong lo Quater duty lo unappudu, prabhu nan darshinchar.
So dear brothers and sisters, if there anyone in this room or looking in this Facebook or through media, if you have a no true peace. The true peace only the Jesus Christ can give, none other than Jesus Christ give.
Ani yadi tabaiya, koi pani ununsha, aja tabaiya Facebook ma social, samajik sanjala haruma apno shanti khoji ranu bayega sa vane, prabhu Isu Chris le matra tabala saachu shanti dinasaknuuncha, aru kunai kurali tabala saachu shanti dinasakdaina.
Ikra kuchnavala yavreina pragni, leda, online lo chustunavari yavreina pragni, inkarnani ruddiyam lo nizamainashanti leka pothe, kevlam pravane Isu Chris unandu matrame, nizamainetvanti santosha samadhanam ni kalgutundi.
Because Jesus Christ is a prince of peace.
Kinavane prabhu Isu Chris say, shanti ka Rajkumar ununcha.
Ente tena pravane Isu Chris var matrame, yo eva samadhanam ko kartayenadu.
Because it says in the, uh, Isaiah, book of Isaiah nine six, I think.
Uh, yani yesaya ko kitab noa deko chapa dhamu unusaksha.
Esha grandam tomidavachemu, aaro vachnum ravi badandi mata.
For unto us a child born, unto us a son, a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder. And his name shall called Wonderful Counselor, the Mighty God, and the Everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace.
Kinavane hamra nimte eva baalak janmeyeko sha, hamila eva putra diyeko sha, anisasen vahako kaadma thunecha. Ani vahako naam adbutsalakar, shaktisali permishar, ananta kaalka pita, shanti ka Rajkumar khalaini sha.
Eliyana ka manaku shushu putteno, manaku kumarudanugreempabadeno, aina bujamamida rajabharamundunu, aascherekarudu, aalavchnakarta, balavantu reena deudu, nittidaku tannri, samadhana kartayago adipati, ani atani ki pairu pettabadunu.
Yeah, Jesus Christ is not only prince of peace, but he eventually said, I will give you my peace.
Prabhu Isu Chris say va shanti ka Rajkumar matra ununna, tarantama garavali bannuncha, ki ma timi erla meru shanti dinesho.
Chundi yes pravvar kevlo nen samadhana kartaku matraman chaple edhikaani, na samadhana ni mikvishtaran koora vaadhanan jesaer.
So, uh, the peace the Lord Jesus Christ gives is like a, flow like a river in our heart.
Ani jo shanti se prabhu Isu Chris le hamila dinunsha, yuchi amro riddema bata eva nadi jastu varabahanda.
Pravane Isu Chris var ichachmadi, a samadhanam nadivali manavruthiyam lo pravhestundi.
Yeah, there was a certain woman who came to the, uh, peace water, uh, in, in a, in a place called Samaria.
Ani tyanira eva stree thiyo, jase pani leanak nimti, yo Samaria vane jagama aegi.
Samaria lo eva stree neel chedukundukare eva baviyadu ko chindi.
Normally in the village, they piss the water in the morning or in the dawn or in the, uh, in the end of the day.
Aja sadaran ta, gau gharmatse, pani leanak nimti, bihan adava belu kichay stree ru jandasa.
Sadarananga neel chedukunadu manedu, udai kalamgaani, saankala velalu matron chastu untar.
But this woman has gone in the noon time.
Taray yo stree say, dinma aja charko ghamma, dinma gayeko thiye.
Aite i stree majhana velalu akarik velindi.
She must have been trying to hide from the, uh, from the people and she, that's why she come in the afternoon.
Say duu che aru manisaru bata lukna chai keethin, anisay, madhye dinma che pani leanagairi keethin.
Tanuk prajalaki kanavaru ta tanakistunledu ganke, ni majhana velalu tanavidanga neel chedukundukare velindi.
But she could not hide from the one, one man, particular man.
Taray ekjana vyakti bata se u lukna sakena.
Aite okka pratekamantvanti vyakti edunichmatran tanu dagaledu.
And God is, God's time is very, you know, perfect time, he synchronized the time, his time is a perfect time. And at the very time, God made that very woman.
Ani ami danda sanki permishar ko samay chay ekdami aja siddha samay uncha, vali sabai samay la milara, teyo thik samay ma chay, probably permishar le teyo stree sangha behet garnu bayo.
Aite pravane Isu Chris var sa rainetvanti, uchitha minutevanti samayam lo, stree ni tan kalogalginadu.
And this woman was surprised and she said, she said, she asked, do you have a, uh, even the Lord Jesus Christ asked in the first place. Can you give me water, uh, for the very, that lady?
Ani teyo stree chakka pare, kinavane prabhu Isu Chris le, paila bata te strela shodnu, vakyati mila malai pani diyun, dinasakshau.
Aite aasher manasangati, pravane Isu Chris var, matamagitika stree ni naa neelivu mani adigar.
This relationship start from the very, you know, the very important conversation.
Ani tyanira eva mukhye bachit bata ne, teyo perm, prabhu Isu Chris angko sammantha tyanira suru bayega.
Yo eva sammantha vane di, pramukkamantvanti yo eva sambashla dorane prarambavatu chindi.
Sometimes we think, dear brothers, sisters, that is God is not looking at us.
Ani dhare palta hamila sha, priyadaju bhai didi banyaru, ki permishar lecha hamila hernu bayega shaina.
Priya sahodari sahodarila ra, koni pariyal manam ankuntuntam, deudu nan choodatledu ani.
There is a one brother was dying on the bed in our, in our church in the UK, in Baraka.
Ani UK Baraka ma ekjana bhai chay ekdami sikista avstama vahavchanma ununtiyo.
UK lo Baraka sangam lo eva sahodaru do, marana paduklotan untu achadu.
He had a colon cancer in his stomach.
Vaache, vahako petma colon cancer bayegi thiyo.
Tanek kaduplo cancer tanu jabu kaliunadu.
God, doctor has said he will, anytime he will, um, died, within the about four or five days' time.
Ani doctor lechi vaneegi thiyo, charpans dinma, kunai samay pani mornasaksha.
Naal gayati dinamlo lo, ye vyakti chani potarani doctor le chepar.
He had two sons and his wife.
Usko se ekjana patni ani dui bhai choraaru thiye.
Tanabaharya idhar kodukul tan kaliunadu.
I happened to go and pray with his, you know, the death bedside along with the two sons and his wife, one day.
Ani ekdino malai tyanira jana, aniwahako aja teyo, vahavchanka choma gera, vahako patni, anisoraar sangha malai prathna ganimao kapai.
Okdinana tanabaharya tan pillalunatvanti ayaka marana padukayodu, anin veli prathan chevalsu chindi.
And the brothers, you know, he hold my hands and he said, I, I give responsibilities to the church, my wife and two sons, I'm ready to depart. I, I confirm where I'm going, I know where I'm going, that this brother said to me.
Ani teyo bhaile mera hatla pagadikanavali bannu bayo, mochay kaa gairi egchu malai tha sa ab, meru chora chori, choraaru, animeru patni lai che mandaliko, aja jimma mama chodera, mo jadaisu, bannera vali bannu bayo.
A sahodar na chai patko ni, ni nekrik veltonan nak telsu, kanka yo eva na baharya, na pillalni, sanghaanike badeyegane nistunvanatvanti matana tu chepadu.
And the, the following day, we had a thirty first of December, normally in thirty first December, we pick up the promises for the year.
Ani orko din chay, bolipalta chay, ekthis December thiyo, anekthis December ma chay, ami jasari pratiyaa ru tipso, tejari ami tipne karso.
Ha malshudidiname mupayakutu December tarik gana, kaadina na vaadhanalme diskunta.
So I picked up the promises and I wrote his name Japanya at his promise card without seeing it.
Ani malai teyo pratiyaa card la tippe, aniwahako naam Sapanya bannera, malai pratiyalan no heri kanavahako naam tyanira lekhe.
A sahodar koorkari vaadhanam thiskoni, danipaidan vaadhanam ento choodakundaga, ani tanapari zefanya ni rasan.
The meeting was still going on and then I just draw back myself, I open his promises and God has given these promises to him.
Ani seva bhai reegi thiyo, aniteti velai malai vahako pratiyala esu, heri, aniyu pathse vahako pratiyara esu.
Kodek, kodekinkai pokmundu ga, neneno prathan chesi, eva vaadhanam thisana, deudi vaadhanam vichadu.
Revelation, Prakashit Pakya.
Prakta nagrandam.
Revelation chapter seven, I think.
Sayat sath adhi unupascha.
Prakta nagrandam edo adhyayemu.
Yeah, Revelation chapter seven, verse seventeen.
Prakashit Pakya sath deko satrapat.
Prakta nagrandam edo adhyayemu, padhedu vachnum.
Kinaki shihasan ko bichma hunune, thomale inyeru ko gothala ganoonisha, ra inyeru lai pani ka jiyunda dhara harma doreyara, lai janoonisha, ani permishar le inyeru ka akhabata sabai aachu puchidinoonisha.
Eliyana ka simvashana madhyanamun nuundo, garre pilla varike kaapari hai, jeeva jalamula, bugala yadu ko varinadipinchunu, deudu evari kanulunandi, prati baspa bindu unu thudichiveenu.
So God knows exactly what time he will depart from this world.
Ani prabula permishala tha thiki, teyo, uh, thik samayki, kun samay chiti bhaile, yo sansar varama lilaanunsha.
Chundi deudu spastanga, kachitanga, regi unadu, ey samayamando, ey dinamando, ye vyakti, ilokani vichpeti velthadani.
After exactly one week, this brother has, you know, promoted in glory.
Ani ek hapta pasat, prabula malai apno maymamalana.
Kachitanga eva varum tarvata, sahodaru prabhu mahimalo pelu padadu.
So dear brothers and sisters, why I'm telling this? Because that woman, God must have known that, see, this very woman who went to the, to piss the water in a Samaritan, Samarian village. And God knew that this woman is, had no peace at all in her, she's seeking to true peace, that's why the Lord Jesus is going to meet that very woman.
Ani ma, kinachi yo kurabhani reegi chu vane, permishar lai teyo samay tha uncha, tyanira pani ami deksho, jasari teyo thik samay ma, teyo Samari stree lai behet gana prabhu Isu Chris tyanira jano, kinavane vala tha thiyo, ki unko riddema cheti, saachu shanti shaina, anithe shanti ko khoji ma yo stree sha bannera.
Priyala, eva maatle neendu chaptunan ante, deudu spastanga ayaka Samaria stree ki eva akkariinti, tan ruddiyam lo samadhanam ledu, nemadreintvanti sangati, yeregi kachitamantvanti, a samayam lo akarik veladu, maatni chaptunan.
Uh, so even, uh, dear brothers and sisters, after forgiven our sins, we are keeping in the fellowship. And we are putting offering in the, in the box, taking part from the lost table, still we have a no peace sometimes.
Priyadaju bhai didi banyaru, yadapi amile prabula payara, seva aira era, bheti ami halera, aja vahako table bata bhagliyeta pani, aja kativolta samay erma cha, amro riddermat yo saachu shanti haraegu uncha.
Priya sahodari sahodarila ra, koni pariyal manam paapolu shamimpabadi napragni, prabhu, aaradistunapragni, prabhu ballo palpudinapragni, manam kaanikalu prabhu kichnaprani tarvata koora, koni pariyal ruddiyam lo nemadalekundaga, samadhanam lekundaga jivistan.
Because this peace also overrule in our heart and then we can overcome through the world.
Ani aji yo shanti lecha amro riddema rajya gare karanchay, ami sansar ma pani bijay prapta gana saksha.
So. Yo eva samadhanam na ruddiyam lo yelubadi chenatlaga vaakya manak sahayapaduthundi.
So God gives us a different types of pieces in our heart.
Ani permishar le se dhare prakarka, a shanti ra amro riddermat dinunsha.
Manavruthiyam lo prabhu, anekakamantvanti samadhanam laani stadu.
We can see in book of Isaiah, chapter twenty six, verse three.
Ukra, ami yesaya ko kitab shabbisa deko, teen padna mi dekhna saksha.
Yesa kela nagrandam irvayara vachem, moodavachnumun chustamu.
Isaiah twenty six, verse three.
Yesaya shabbisa deko, teen pad.
Teen pad. Esha grandam irvayara vachem, moodavachnumandi.
Jasko manma, jasko man tapaimathi adesiyara basekunsha, usla aita palai shanti nai, shanti ma jogai rakunsha, kinaki, vahali tapaimathi barosa ragdasa.
Yavani manasu ni midanankunu, no, vani puurna shanti galavani gaj kaapaduthu, Eliyana ka, atarun ni endu viswasmunchi unadu.
This is, is a peace, is like a great peace.
Yani eva mahanshanti ko kuragari.
Ii puurna shanti leda, goppa shanti gauntundi.
So even after born again, sometimes we have no peace.
Ami dhare palta naya janma paya pasat pani, amro riddema shanti.
Koni pariyal tiriji janmichin tarvata koora, yo eva samadhanam manam kolkutu untam.
Sometime we do not give our heart to God to rule over his peace.
Ani dhare palta cha, amile amro riddela, permishar lai vahako shanti le rajya garna ganimti diyekaun daino.
Koni pariyal deu neka samadhanam na ruddiyam lo yelubadi chedani kaanumatinshamu.
That's why the Lord also wanted to give us his true peace in our heart, in order to rule to our hearts.
Ani yeskaran chay prabula vahako saachu shanti la amro riddema dinasanaunsha, takiwali amro riddela cha vahako shanti le rajya ganaasana.
Anche tena prabhu tanayaka samadhana ni manavruthiyam lo yelubadi chenatlaga ani istunadu.
Uh, so let's come to the, our main, uh, topics.
Amro, um, mukhye part ma ami au.
Unam mukhye partamun koadam ipudu.
And this, uh, bed speaks about the rest.
Ani yani ra eva palang lechay, bisrahala dekhundasa.
Ii mansh manadi, vishranti gurinsmatratundi.
So sometimes we, you know, in the service of God, but we are restless.
Dhare palta cha, ami permishar ko seva kaima unso, tarati bisrahcha amile payekaun daino.
Koni pariyal deu neka seva lo koora vishranti lekundaga untam.
So many believers are looks very restless.
Ani dharei chay tyanira ekdam, uh, teyo, a bisraham rahitko viswasiro ami dekhdosha.
Anek manav viswastulu vishranti lekundaga, kanpishtu, kanpishtu untar.
Uh, so only true rest we can find in the Lord Jesus Christ.
Prabhu Isu Chris ma matra amile teyo saachu bisraham paunusaksha.
Nizamainetvanti vishranti kevlam pravane Isu Chris na du matramanam choodakalutam.
So this bed speaks about the rest of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ani yo palang lechay, prabhu Isu Chris ko bisrahala dekhundasa.
Ii mansh manadi, pravane Isu Chris var eva vishranti gurinsmatratundi.
So there are many, uh, rest speaks in the Bible.
Bible ma dhare eva prakarka bisrahamaru ko kuragadi.
Bible lo anekamantvanti vishrantil gurinshi raibaddai.
The first rest is, 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 you know, born again and we just come into the kingdom of Christ.
Ani teyo paila, eva paila prakarka bisraham cha, jab amile naya janma paunso, aniprabhu Isu Chris ko rajya ma pravishkarso, teeti velai amile te bisraham paunso.
Mati vishranti lecha samadhanam, pravane Isu Chris var neendu viswasmunchi tiriji janmichnapuru, deu rajavaresla inapuru manam kaliuntam.
Because we were, we were bound is in sin and we were chained by the Satan of the world and also clutches of sin.
Ani kinavane ami chay teyo, sa, sa, paap ko dasvattamathiyo, ami Satan ko sangla le badiyega thiyo, andi Satan ko thiyo, aja hatle, aja nangra le amle pagadegi.
Ente tena de paapamun ko bani slamai paya, sathani eva sankela cheta, paapu bandhikal cheta manam jivistuntam.
And the power of the death over ruling over us.
Ani mritu ko shaktilecha amila rajya gareregi.
Marana balamu manapana yelubadi chestundi.
Once we get released from there, when we get the peace of the Lord in our heart, then we release from this power, uh, and we come to the kingdom of God.
Ani jab amile thiyo shanti la prapta gadaso, teeti velasi sabai kurabada ami chutkara paykana, prabhu Isu Chris ko rajya ma am pravishkaradaso.
Eprate pravane Isu Chris var eva samadhanam manam podukutamo, i bandhikal ani nishvidhalapundi, deu neka rajavaresla matam.
And we transferred or translate from the darkness to the light of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ani ami chay, amro jivan chay, andhakardeki prabhu Isu Chris ko joti ma ami sarisake ganesha.
Apur manajivitam andhakaramlo nunchi, pravane Isu Chris var eva aascherekarman velugiloniki praveshampajayapadtam.
And that is the first rest speaks of the Bible.
Ani Bible ma chay yo lekhe ko pailo prakarko bisrahamho.
Bible matla twenty, matamagitika vishranti samadhanamidi.
And there is another rest also speaks, uh, in the Bible.
Ani Bible ma orko prakarka bisraham pani de likhi.
Bible maro eva vishranti gurinskutu matratundi.
That, 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 that rest is, we completely, you know, rely unto the Lord and we fully committed into the service of the Lord.
Ani yo chay bisraham cha, ami chay puurna prakarle permishar ma barosa pareko, aniwahako seva ka puurna prakarle amile gareko, kurada dekhunsha.
A vishranti intant, deu ni sevichstukare, sampuranga deu nu paina adharapadi, aene paine nammyke yinchta, barosaunchta.
And nowadays we can see the Christians are, uh, have a, serving like two masters.
Ani aja ko dinarba se, ami, aja viswasiro ko jivan chay, duita malikko seva gareregi jastu ami deksho.
Ii dinala viswastulu chustunapuru, idhar yajmalali sevistunatuka kanpishtu untar.
Because we are living in the church ages, ages at the moment.
Alachi amile yo mandaliko samay erma ami ji reegas.
Ente tena de manam sangayugamlo unnam ipudu.
And even the, the last church called Loudishia Church, that's the, the age of the Loudishia we are living at the moment.
Ani teyo antim mandalik jase Loudishia ko mandaliko samay ma aile ami ji reegas.
Chivari sangamantvanti, laudekaya sangapo, yogamlo manam jivistunam.
Uh, in the UK, we can find bread like a fifty fifty.
Ani UK ma chay amile, aja pataas pataas, pat, pratisat jastu ami deksho.
A UK laite, ayaka yaabayaabai shatam vanti bread ga doruktundanta.
When I go to shop to buy bread, my wife say, can you bring fifty fifty bread?
Ani tyanira jabam mochay bread leana janshu, teeti meru patni le mancha, ki tabai fifty fifty vake bread liyavun.
Ni shop kelti na baharya eva yaabayaabai eva bread thiskaraman chepina gaptundi.
Yeah, because I like brown bread and my wife like white bread.
Kinavane mochay brown bread manpersa, animeru patni lai se white bread manpersa.
Na brown bread antistam, na baharya ki eva telebread antistam.
In the market, what they did, you know, they put half brown flour, half white flour, and they mix it and then they write fifty fifty.
Ani, anidokan ma chay unyelikhe garsa vane, eva se, brown bread ko ata, aniorko seto, bread ko ata, misar se fifty fifty vane, dui prakarkai, bread tyanira eva kurama am paunso.
Market lo var enchesar antyevaka, brown bread eva, eva pindi ni, tarvata telebread eva, pindi, rondutni kalipi, var, uh, breads chesvambutu untar.
Their idea is to satisfy everybody.
Aja unyeru ko, aja idea chesa, sapala khushi bannu.
Var aalavchninant, antadi truktiparchalani.
So today's Christians are like fifty fifty.
Ani aile ko viswasiro pani fifty fifty.
Ii dinana Christol koora, ividanga yaabai shatam, yaabai shatam untar.
Yeah, if you go to the world, they might TikTok, music, everything, and then come to the house of God, they are like angels.
Ani jab unyeru sansar ma jansha, unyeru ko TikTok, Facebook, sabai kurati, tavan tikaisa, anijaba mandalima unse ekdam sarga du jastu bayega, tavan tikaisa.
Iloko mloko velte var TikTok, eva Facebook, i vane, lokasamadu na sangataluntai, devan mandrang raaga, ni duvadu talavali kanpishtu untar.
But bear, bear in mind, dear brothers, sisters, uh, we are not overcomer believers.
Taray teyo kurayat garnos priyadaju bhai didi banyaru, ami chay bijay viswasiro bayega.
We have a no.
Viswastulamga jayavantlanti, veda viswastulanga jivichatleidu priyala ra.
We have not fully come to the rest in the Christ Jesus.
Kinavane ami chay teyo puurna prakarko pravish, Chris ko bisrahama aisakega.
Chris naando paripurnamantvanti vishranti lo kinga manam pravishinchatledu.
And thank God that woman, the sunemi, sunemi woman, she knows that, you know, that, Eliza speaks of the Holy Spirit in the Bible.
Prabula dhannebatoski, yo sunemi stree lechay tejanae thiye, kinavane Elisa lechay, aja Bible ma chay, pavitra atmalai dekhundasa.
Aite devan sotramu, sunemi eva, eva stree ki satyam tan yereyunadi, eva Elisa, parshudhatma devan ko suchniga untnadu.
And the woman speaks the church.
Ani teyo stree lechay mandaliko visema dekhundasa.
Ii sangamnaku sadrisshanga stree untundi.
And the bed speaks ourselves.
Ani yo roti lechay, hamila amro jyala dekhundasa.
The, the, the bed.
Ma garnos, teyo palang lechay, hamila dekhundasa.
Ii mansh manadi, manajivitan sadrisshanga undi.
The, in the Holy Spirit must dwell, indwelling spirit, spirit, you know, in, in, within us.
Ani teyo pavitra atma chay, bhitra baskane atma chay, ami bhitra baskano paradasa.
Ii parshudhatma deudu manayandani vasvutana chayali.
Yeah, and then only we can have a spirit-filled life.
Ani matra ami teyo atma le bharayegi jivan jivanasaksha.
Apur matrame atma chetha nimpa bani na jivitam kaliuntam.
So another, the furniture we can see, uh, after the bed, we can see a stool, I think, no table, we can see the table.
Orko sama grje, tyanira.
Praveen Esukriswaritono tarvata itar vishvasulto manam kaligunnetu twenty sahavasam gurichikna apkum jessundi.
Only on the if we partake from the table every day then our spiritual growth will in advance. And we can reach in the stature of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Y table baata bhagliyoon bhanne matra hamra atmike jivan badhdey jantsha ani prabhu esukris justo amro tiyo az tya kura tya hami amro atmik jivan pugna saksa. Y astma samandavan balalopra tiddinav manamo palu teeskuntene kaani atmiyenga manamo krishtu swarupiyam loorki manam yedega kalutam.
That table is obviously speaks about the wood of God, the Bible.
Ani table lechey prabhu esukris, permissor ko bochan bible ko visema kura garasa. Y ballane yidhi devon vaakke metu twenty bible nee sadhvi shanga matlartundi.
What time, how many times do we eat every day?
Ami dinma katipalta khana khansau. Dinmalo enni pariyal manam bojnan jastam.
Can you tell me brothers sisters?
Kita paale bhanne saknu sah ami katipalta dinma khana khansau. Daeches chappandi enni pariyal manam bojnan jastam.
Some say three times and some say four times.
Katile tinn paltaare katile char paltaare. Yes. Mood sala naalu sala japtunare.
Obviously we eat four times.
Ani ami char palta khansau. Saadarananga naalu pariyal manam tintam.
We eat breakfast.
Ami biyan khaja khansau. Alpa haran tintamu.
We eat lunch.
Tya dikh ami diusoko ami khana khansau. Madhyana bojnan tintamu.
And then after we have a tea time also.
Ani tyanira diusam ami chia chameena kikke khansau. Tiri tea time guda kaliguntam.
Then we have a dinner.
Ani badma ami raatiko khana pani khansau. Tiri raatri bojnan tintamu.
But how many times should we read the Bible?
Tara ami katipalta sey ami bible porsa dinma. Enni salre devon vaakke manam sawtunam.
Hardly we read one chapter a day.
Ani ami muskille ek adhe sey ami dinma porsa. Ati kastanga dinaniki okha adheam jaudutam.
That's why we cannot grow in the spiritual.
Yes karan sey ami atmik jivan ami bharana sakega. Anse thine manatmiyey chiyutono manam yedega leka potunam.
Thank God I brother Saran Gurung was sharing me during the you know God servants meeting.
Pravula dhaneba dosa hamra bhai Saran Gurung le tyanira vada message diranu bhai ko tiyo tiyo meeting ma prabhu ko dasar ko meeting ma. Ani young stotramo ek sevgu kudi kallo saran garay vaidanga vaakke penskunaro.
In his church, in fical ilam, there is a brother, he is a deaf and dumb, he cannot speak, and he is in the church.
Ani tyanira fical ilam ko mandali ma sey tyanira ek jana bhai sey joshe bolna pani sakdaina ani sunna pani sakdaina. Vari ek sangamlo ek sahodaru do matlaal ledu vinaledu.
But he married and thank God he got a very clever woman.
Ani usle biha garegasa ani usle prabhu ko daaybo usle vada ramro az patni paikasa. Thudem stotramo devu telvainetu twenty barinay thanki chadu.
Yeah, his wife is very wise.
Ani usko patni chate ney azadam jyani sey. Tana bar yentok jyana ventralu.
He has got two children.
Ani usko duijana nani rupanisha. Var kithari pillalu naru.
And one son, he is about eleven now, he by heart he can you know tell Psalms one hundred and nineteen.
Ani usko evda sarajoshe ekara barsakunu pasa usle sey Bhajan Sangro Kitap Ekso Unais Adheelai Kantastha garegasa. Tana kumarudu padukundu samasralo abhai epnoota pandavdo keethanantakuda Kantastham jess chaptadu.
So dear brothers and sisters, if you see our Muslim brothers, sisters.
Priya dasu bhai didi bani yedhi tapaile muslim samodaika dasu bhai didi bani hernu bhai bani. Pre sahodar sahodar lara yeku mahamadiya sahodar sahodar le manam soochnapru.
I don't know here but in England, they you know after coming back their school, they put another clothes, top to bottom, they put you know if a boy he put a cap, if it's a girl and then just burka, they you know carry one bag and they go to the mosque.
Ani yani ra thala tha sahena tarah England ma sey jabu neari school vada aunsah tyanir le luga ferera, arke prakar ko luga launsah, ani vada bag tipera university masjid ma jada sah. Ikka vishalnak tilidga ani aikka UK leite achna pillalu var school aipana tarvata aikka masjid ke velitamlo var yaaka vastralo, varenetu vastral veskun valtar, abhai leite kanke talapena topi betko namma leite burka veskun valtar.
And he mullah is waiting there with the stick and they have to you know this what you call this Quran, they have to pronounce many times, they by heart they Quran so they do.
Ani tyanira unir mullah sey tyanira lottilire basiregasa ani unir goera sey tyanira ti Quran ka kurahar sey unir mu kasta garra bhanu pasa. Var mullah akka wait chestu untadu veer var ekka galintarvata ekko Quran antetu guda Kantastham chesvar chappali.
I just want to tell about the England also dear brothers and sisters.
Ani England ko visema pani tiy kura bhanne chaansu. Pre sahodar sahodar lara England gurichkuda kon sangatul chappagortunan.
I think you heard about William Tyndale who wrote the Bible from Greek to English, he translated the Bible from Greek to English.
Tapale William Tyndale ko visema sunnu bhai ko sah jasle sey Greek dekhi angreji basama bible la anubad garay. Pausamir William Tyndale gurichvininda vachsu Greek basan sey English basan leunki tarjuma jessnetu twenty vekti.
And there was other three God servants, they were not ordinary men but they were bishops.
Ani tyanira tinjana aru permissor ka janarthe jote sadaran vekti thiyanan tarah unir sey charsko bishop aru they. Aite migita mugur daiv sevgu gudunar var samanyaman vektel karga ani vaka sangamna kuvar bishop lo.
They, that's the three men was Hugh Latimer.
Ek jana man sey nam Hugh Latimer they. Andlo vaka vekti pareho Hugh Latimer.
And Thomas Cranmer.
Ani aurko ko naam sey thiyo Thomas Cranmer. Mar vekti pare Thomas Cranmer.
The other man was Nicholas Ridley.
Ani aurko sey Nicholas Ridley mane man. Mudda vekti Nicholas Ridley.
This three men was born alive in Oxford, where is the Oxford University is here, here at the moment.
Aile junse jagama Oxford University sah England ma tiyo jagama sey tinjana la jyudai jalai ekko thiyo. Ipuriya stalamla Oxford University indho aashtanlandi mugur vektili guda perugutachar.
Because during the Roman Catholic era and they said only through the pop, they can, after prayer of the pop, they can get the salvation, they have a mentality developed like that.
Ani tedibela gsamima sey Roman Catholic o samima sey istu kalke siksha they ki kali pople garegu prathna dhara matra mansele udhar mukti pownsah bhanne siksha aru tyanira they. Adinalanu Roman Catholic yoga mane varu adinalo kevlam devu do yekko pople dhara matrami mana papakshama paru gurichmatlartada neni namme varu.
Even in the schools they were asking to the children, do you have a Bible in your home, if they knew and then the Bible will be taken and the whole family will take taken and they will kill or martyr the family there.
Ani nani le school ma pani tyanira sothiyo ki timer ko garma Bible sagichaina bana ra yedhi cha bana sey tiyo sampoorna parivar laina tyanira logera unir la mariin thiyo ani Bible la chukosthiyo. Adinalo kavila school pillali yada Bible una than talistaka valla Bible la lagveskuntara taravata kutumbanantakni guda var champi vedanka ani hatichedanga jester.
But these three bishops were, they were bishops once upon a time in the you know in Canterbury and other places, they were bishops in that time.
Ani tiy tinjana vekti aru sey kunesh samima tyanira Canterbury ani aru jagaa aru sey bishop aru unir they. Adinala vi mugur guda Cantigarri itar stalallo vir bishopulka pani jessunar.
They come to know the salvation is only by faith, by grace, through the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ani unir le sey tiyo Quran la buje gathyo ki udharra mukti sey prabhu esukris ma bhai ko anugra ani biswazdara matra pownsah. Asamyalo var telskunari entante devune ko krupadhvara ne krishtanandhal vishvasam dhvara ne rakshna kalutu thane twenty sangatina namme.
But they did not deny after this truth of the deity of God and of faith of the Lord Jesus Christ, but they rather prepared to burn alive in the fire.
Tarah unir le tiyo saachu kura josey prabhu esukris ko prabhu thwa ani yo saachu kura la sey unir le azah inkar gane ki unir inkar garan, tarah unir tiyo aagma jalainu unir tayar bhai. Var praveen esukris varu esukris varika daivatiyani kadu ani nirakarinskundaga tereskrinskundaga tamnutaam sajiva dahnam cheskundan guda sidhaparthu achnar.
Yeah, that's why dear brothers and sisters, so today we able to read this Bible because of their sacrifice.
Ani var ko balidan ko dhvara le sey azha ameli Bible parnapai rehiga sah. Anse thine priya sahodar sahodar lara idinana manam yee Bible chadu kalutunam.
But now Great Britain have a fallen very down, there is a, we can call that no more Christian country anymore, Great Britain.
Tarah dukhakura azha angrejsko junse thiyo England sah yosabe rajyeru sey ekdam azha unir atmik rupma patan bharale unir la vada Christian country bhanina pani azha milaina. Athi dukkakarama twenty sangatina entante atmiyenga ento patanamaipe degijaripe Great Britain ipudu vaka Christova deshanga pilovadana twenty situlokachesundi.
But God has, the good thing is God has taken us over there from Asia, from India, Nepal, even Africa, even you know Malaysia and Hong Kong, China, many people from east to now, they you know shifted to west in a Great Britain.
Ani tarah pravula dhaneba doski azha hamile sey tyanira jaanimao ka payo jastey amiyabata Nepal baata India, Africa, ani asta dhare vada Asia ka bhagaru baata sey manisar vishwasieru tya goera Great Britain ma basavasugare rehiga. Athi devon stotramo ekbarad deshuprazal ni taravata Nepal prazal ni isanya deshuprazal andari guda akka devu teeskalto achnar.
So God has given us burden to reach, outreach this Gora nations, so please pray for us.
Ani prabhu le amela yu bojdinu bhai gasa ki ami vaharu ka garav prabhu ko susamacharla ami sunauso tapale amlo nimti pani prathna gurijis. Aa pranthalo swarthapraknisku korekai prabhu magba baramichsarganka daechesma korekai prathan seyandi.
So God has opened the door in Europe also now, Romania, Holland and also Cyprus, Israel and we are reaching in Portugal, so please continue to pray for us.
Ani pravule afnu Europe ma pani afnu dhwarla kholnu bhai gasa esegarikan Holland ma Cyprus ma ani asta bivinnabhagaruma vallia afnu dhwarlae kholnu bhai gasa tapale prathname yaad gurjinho. Ayropalo devu ipudu dharam teristu achadu kanka daeches prathan seydi Israel lo no Cyprus lo no Romania lo no itar deshalo no sevachetu korekai prabhu krupistunar.
So I was just trying to tell about the second rest of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ani mayle sey prabhu esukris ko dosro visram ko visema bhanire. Praveen esukris var anugreenchatu tiy randav visrant gurichnani chappagortunan.
The second rest is completely we surrender our life filled with the Holy Spirit and also God has gift, God has given us the many gifts, that gifts must be utilized in the body of Christ, that is the second rest.
Ani yo dosro visram sey prabhu esukris ma purna prakarle bharsa garera, pavitra atma le bharyera, jatti jana az jatti pani vahako pavitra atmakodan badanorasa thi sey vahako deha athava mandali ma proyog gareko, yosey dosro prakar ko visram ho. Randav visranti ente praveen esukris var and sampoornanga manamo ayni andhadahara padinamnikenshtu dhvara ayni tanekka parashuddhaatma chetata ino varamul cheta prabhu manal nimputu cheta, aa varamlano prabhu mahimek korekai manam vaaduka wali.
And the third rest is still left, that it will be completely when Lord Jesus Christ will come.
Ani yo teshro visram sey azai tiyo baki ney sah ani tiyo sey ami tedibela pownsah jab prabhu esukris ameli naunun sah. Y moodav visranti epdu sampoornamautu thande praveen esukris var tirivachna pramatrme.
Romans chapter eight, I think Romans.
Romi aatade. Romil rasnapathri kenbido achha imu.
Romans chapter eight verse twenty-two, twenty-three, yeah.
Romi aatade ko bhaiis ani teispal. Romil rasnapathri kenbido achha imu iruvaran iruva moodavachnar. Kinaki ami jandasaun, aile samma pani sara sristi ek saath aya athagari rehiko ra prasuti vednama tardpi rehikasan, cha ani tiniaru matra hainan tarah hamiru pani jas sangha atma ko pari pari pahilo fal ho cha, ahami afai pani dharmaputra grahan garikartha, hamro sharir ko chutkara ko baato herday, afu bitra bitra aya athagardasaun. Sustiyavatui iduvaraka ek agriyamuka mulguchu prasava vedana paduchunadani erugudu mu, ante kado atmayoka prathamofalamula nonina manamu guda datta putratvamu koraku, anaga mana dehamu, yekka vimochunamu koraku, kanipettu chu manalo manamo mulguchunnamu.
Also we can see in the Hebrew chapter four and verse three.
Ani ukura ami Hebrew ko kitap charadekothi ma pani dehosa. Tiri apple rasnapathri ka naalgo achha moodavachnar gudi sangat chudavachu. Kinaki ami jasle vishwas garegasaun, yes tesh visrama proves karsaun, jasto vahale bhanu bhai gasa, mayle mero krod ma kasam khaye, tiniaru mero visrama proves karne sahinen nai, yedapi sansaar ko utpati dekhi nai kamaru samapta bhai bhai sakega san. Kaakar jagatipunadi vebedukumunupae aayna kariyamulani yos sampoornama yunna yeyunna nu, ee visranti ne gurichneenu koopamuto pramanam chesinattu varuna visranti lo provesimparu, ani aayna chappina mata ansarinci vishvaslamayna manamu aa visranti lo provesinchuchunnamu.
If we do not partake of the first and second rest, then we will not enter to the third rest also.
Yedhi ami pahilo ani dosro visram ko bhagidar bhai gasa sahena bane, ti teshro visrama ami proves karnasak. Vika matamadati randavayaka visranti lo manam provesinchukupote moodav visranti netu twenty iparam visranti lo manam provesinchale.
Yeah, I think that the power is, I was telling to brother Satya also the other day, the power once upon a, you know God has worked in the European countries and you know the western countries and the literally this, the power of God, the movement of the Holy Spirit is shifted to the east at the moment.
Ani mayle bhai Satya Rasa manthi kura gariregasa, kesaceni ek samay tiyo shakti pavitra atmakoshakti Europe ani tiyo bhuvagarma they bane, aile sey azha yu purveli desharma azha Bharat barsa yu Asia ali desharma sey pavitra atmakotyani rami kamla dekdasan. Sor Satya Rajgatudi madhna chaptu achanu, munjpati dinallo yekka Ayropad, yekka kandam yekka pranthalo parashuddhaatma deyegu yekka shakti vanthama kariyal manam chustu acham, aite idinallo Asia ledha yekka isanya deshalo yekka shakti manam chudavachu.
Yes, this the fastest the Christian growing country is Nepal, one of the Nepal at the moment.
Ani azad, sabai banda azadherai Christian bhai rehiko desha aile Nepal ho. Athi veganga Christo deshanga martuna twenty deshamo Nepali idinallo.
I happen to, I had a privilege to stay in China, before the pandemic, we stayed there for twenty-eight days.
Ani mayle azai tiyo pandemic banda agadi atthais din China ma tya basne mau ka paye. Y mahamari rakantam muduga, iruvayana vidinallo unis China lo undetu twenty adhikatanak kaligunan.
So there are two types of church in China at the moment.
China ma sey tyanira aile dui prakarka mandali aru san. China lo rondo rakamla twenty sangamlo nai.
There's one church is controlled by the government.
Evda church, evda mandali sey tyan sey sarkarle tyanira.
Niantran.
Niantran garasa. Vaka sangamo ek prabuthom dhara rajan sey barthuna twenty sangamo.
The other church is underground church.
Ani aurko sey vada lukhi chipi karne mandali pani sah. Randav sangamo ek underground lo netu twenty sangamo.
So the government controlled church is controlled by the government, everything, their singing, their praying and even their money, they controlled by the government.
Ani tiyo mandali jasla sey sarkarle China sarkarle niantran garegasa, unir le sey sabai kura harlane niantran garasa jastey giit gaunu, beeti, azha unir ko paisa rupya sabai kura nai sarkarle niantran garasa. Chadi prabuthom chitha niyathincha budhunat twenty aikka sangalavetunayo var yaaka aradanemi var yaaka kramamanti, var yaaka double andi guda yekka prabuthom chitha niantincha bartai.
Before their service start, they have to sing a anthem song.
Ani unir ko seva gaya suru garna banda ageni unir le China ko tiyo azha rastriya gaan gaunu pasa. Var yaaka parichirya praramisakanta muduga yekka chena yekka rastri ritham var padali.
But the underground church is according the Bible, you know the, but the vast many who gave the life and then Hudson Tyler and John Song who gave their life and they, you know they laid the foundation according what Brother Boxing did, they are the one who practicing this pattern, that's the underground church.
Ani tiyo aurko mandali joshe lukhi chipi gardasa unir sey azai tiy saachu mandali yojosey Hudson Taylor, Watchmane, Brother Boxing, jasta manisale laga, ati banaiyeko unir ko foundation ma sey banaiyeko ti mandali aru san. Athi underground sangalo anaga rahassenga kulku netu twenty yekka sangalani guda Watchmane, Hudson Taylor, John Songan, anetu twenty daivijanalu var nirvainchuna twenty aikka sang kramam chopuna, basaodar Boxing gar dhara manu chupinchamana twenty ee kramavone var yaaka seva parichere konusagutundi.
The brother whom you stayed, his name is Abraham Go and he was telling us, and also many, you know in the UK there are many Bible societies, they print the Chinese Bible and they sent, and the brother also testifying, millions of millions Bible printed every day in China.
Ani ami junse ek jana brother ko ma bhai ko ma basikati vahako naam sey Abraham Ho, ani vahale bhanirano bhai gathyo ki dhare vada kadaaro azha Bible oru sey UK ma Chinese basama chapiera, kadaaro Bible oru tyanira Chinese manisale padi rehiga san maner bhanirano bhai gathyo. Eiti valla vaka sahodaru Abraham Ho anetu twenty vekti niten kalsaanu, atano China basalo mudra sey mudra sey bane twenty Bible ani chupinchadu tarvata nekametu twenty million lakoli thi Bible la prati dinam guda mudrinchta visamayne chappadu.
So dear and brothers sisters, because why I'm telling this all, because if we honor God and God will honor us.
Azha priya dasu bhai didi me bhaniru mu kinayukura bhaniregasa bane, yedhi ameli permissala adar garay bane, vahale amela pani adar gununsa. Visangatulani mikendu chaptunalanante prabhu nu manam ghana pariste prabhu manalni ghana paristadu.
Because the English and they did the western people, they have left their first love for the Christ.
Ani tyanira junse angreji athavatiyo pasimi desharle sey prabhu esukris ko ti pahilo premla unir le gumai sakega sah. Ente thane yekka English basmatla twenty deshalo le dante paschata deshalo devu yekka madati premanu var widichpadu achar.
Thank God because God has chosen you and me like you know insignificant people, but God has chosen us and at least we we know the truth and we are serving the living God.
Tar pravula dhaneba dos vahale tapairo mojasto kamna lagne mancher lae chunnu bhai gasa tarah ameli saachu kuralai ameli paikasaani vahako seva gariregasa. Athi devon stotramo ento ayog gila minute twenty manali pravu inchkunadu tana sevachestu korekai manal airparchkunadu.
And there are four, we were looking about the four furniture, four pieces furniture in that particular room of this called Sunami.
Ani yu azha hamro paat ma sey azha tiyo sunaima istri ko garma bhai ko charvata samagriyathava furniture aru ko visema amile ri rehiga sah. Shuni mistri yoka ekka godapenetu twenty gadi lo netu twenty naalu samagri le gurichmanam dhyanistu acham.
I must finish by now because brother was telling me because tomorrow is early morning, please brother take only one hour.
Ani azha moj sey abhayo kurala banda gariregasu kinavani bhai le bhanu bhai gathyo, bolibian pani biyan ke upasna seva gayasa ani ek ghanta matra bana ra bhanu bhai gathyo. Ude kalmaradana paricharindu kanka sahodaru kevlam okha ghanta matra vaakke chappalan chapparu.
So tonight we able to see the four pieces of the furniture of that particular room.
Azha raj ameli tiyo kotama bhai ko charvata furniture samagriyarku visema ernimao ka payo. Y raatri velalo yekka gadi lo netu twenty naalu samagri gurichmanam vinto acham.
So bed speaks about the rest of the Lord.
Ani yu palang le sey prabhu esukris ko visramla dekhunda sah. Mansma nedi praveen esukris var anugreenchatu tiy visranti gurichmatlartundi.
Also bed speaks about the peace of the Lord Jesus Christ himself.
Ani yu palang le sey prabhu esukris swayam ko shanti la pani dekhunda sah. Y mansma praveen esukris var anugreenchatu twenty samadhana gurichmatlartundi.
Also bed speaks about reconciliation with the father once upon a time, after because of the fallen nature, because of the sin entered into the mankind, we were enemy to God, we cannot reach God.
Ani yu palang le sey hamro permissor sangha ko milapla pani dekhunda sah, jun kura sey azha sristi ko agene hamro pap ko karane vahako vah sangha ko sambandalae, thodiye ko sambanda, feripani jodiye ko kurala pani dekhun sah. Y mansma nedi devu ichetu twenty aikka tandito ichetu twenty samadhana gurichmatlartuni ente chetanante mana pap apradhanu cheta tandito manamo aa sambandam kolupai durango manam jishtu achna.
And table speaks about the fellowship with the son the Lord Jesus Christ and also fellowship with our fellow believers, brothers sisters.
Ani table leche dekhunda sah yosey prabhu esukris sangha ko sangati ani hamro sangi vishwasier sangha ko sangati. Yekka randav dika ballane yidhi praveen esukris var to manam kaligunnetu twenty sahavasamnu, tarvata manaka sahapati vishvasulto kaligunde sahavasam gurichmatlartundi.
We can, first we have a fellowship with the Lord Jesus Christ which is like a vertical, you know we can see the vertical, that we must have fellowship with the God first.
Ani pahilo sey hamro sangati ma sey ami prabhu esukris sangha athavatiyo thadu azai tiyo sangati la ami dekdekdasan. Madhutaya praveen esukris var to sambandam sahavasam kaliguntanante neeru ga krisht pravari to nitaramga kaligunnetu twenty sahavasamo.
Sir first Corinthians one nine he speaks all about.
Ani jese pahilo Koranti ekadeka no padma ikura likhi. Marit Koranti rasnapathri ka madhutay sam tamida vachnumi vaakke vachnum gurichmatlartundi.
And the second is the fellowship with the brothers, sisters or coworkers, fellow believers which is called the horizontal.
Ani aurko prakar ko sangati sey sabai afnu azha sangi vishwasier sangha gurunsa joshe vada tairsa prakar ko sangati unsa. Randav sahavasam manata sahapati vishvasulto kaligunnetu twenty sahavasamo.
So in our fellowship we can see the cross, invisible cross, one vertical and one horizontal.
Ani hamro sangati ma sey vada andhiki krushla ami tya dekshun, joshe vada thadu kaatla rakhiyega sah prabhu esukris sangha ko sangati ani hamro tairsa rakhiyega kaat joshe sangi vishwasier sangha ko sangati. Iti vidhanamla adhrishma nareetuloo krisht pravari yekka silvanu vishvasula sangamlo manam chura kalutam, nilugu ga krisht pravari to sahavasam kaliguntu, tarvata samantaraga mana sahapati vishvasulto kaligunnetu twenty sahavasamo.
So there is a two pieces has left, two pieces of furniture left, if God will and we will continue to our study.
Ani anira duita azai samagriyarku visema ameli hernu thiyo, tarah samay vaira, no vaira ameli hernu sakeno prabhu gitsa bhai kunesh samay ame eswair. Engarando samagri gurichkutraibadani vadi prabuchitamai tey tarvata manam dhyanista.
So if in my weaknesses, if I made a mistake because of the language barrier, please forgive me and jay meski.
Ani yedhi mero bahasa ko karane kunipani galti ki kura ma baata bhai bane, tapale sama gurjinosani saba lay jay meski. Naika bahasa hadu baatal mati edano parpaatchesu thaitu nank shaminchandi andar ki jay meski.
Loving only Father, we thank and praise you in the name of Lord Jesus Christ. Lord, we thank and praise you for the word you have given. As a word says, send thy word and have healed them. According to our need, Lord, you have catered us a lot. Lord, all the hospitality that Shuna, the women of Shunaim could do for all that things, we thank and praise you, Lord. Thank you for those room. And all the articles over there, we thank you, Lord. Thank you for the bed that she provided. And thank you for the table. And thank you for the candlestick, Lord. And thank you for that table also, Lord. Truly this bed speaks about the rest that we get, Lord. Lord, you said that you will give us the rest and peace, Lord. And all those who are laden and heavy burden, you told this promise, Lord. Lord, give us rest, Lord. Secondly, it speaks about completely depending upon the Lord Jesus Christ, Lord. Those who lean and rely upon you and you said that you will keep them safe in an perfect peace, Lord. Lord, help us to give the, have this heart of depending upon you and give that heart, Lord. Help us to trust you completely, Lord. And Lord, none of the sin may enter into our lives, Lord. And thirdly, it speaks about the eternal abode where those who are believed in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and who are having these first two pieces and they shall enter into this kingdom, Lord. Lord, help us to keep our faith and also to reach up to Lord Jesus Christ, Lord. Lord, help us to hold fast that which is with us, Lord. Lord, as you said that do not forget to provide hospitality, help us not to refrain from doing this, Lord. Lord, thank you Jesus for giving this word to us. Bless this potion for us, Lord. Lord, we are helpless people. And according to their need, Lord, you have catered, Lord. For the benefit of our life, you please help us, Lord. And we worship you. And the rest of the things also you cater to us, Lord. And prepare us for tomorrow. And remove all our tiredness, Lord. With worship, we pray in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ aim.
Amen. Now may the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ, love of the Father, fellowship of the Holy Spirit be with us now and forevermore. Amen. Kindly remember the announcement. So tomorrow as usual in every, every place, every local church will have worship service. But evening, God willing, at five thirty PM, we'll have Thanksgiving meeting at Vijayanagar Carmel House of Worship. So we'll, we'll post the location and everything in your respective local church WhatsApp group. So you can come over there on time. Now law office has been prepared for everybody, so kindly have law office at go. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord.